Good evening, everyone. Sorry about the delay. Let's open the regular meeting of the Town Council meeting for October 1st. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Councilman Montgomery.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk, please call the roll.
Councilor Inman. Councilor Callow.
Present.
Councilor Christopher.
Here.
Councilor Montgomery.
Here.
Councilor DeMarco.
Here.
Councilor Farino.
Here.
Councilor LaCorte.
Present.
Vice President Luteri.
Here.
President Beckio.
Here.
Thank you.
I would like to take a motion to accept the minutes of the September 17th Town Council.
It shall move.
Executive.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the aye. Okay. Public hearing. I think we have a forum. Point of view?
No.
Not have a vote.
Okay. So, we're gonna suspend the rules. We're gonna bypass the public hearing until we get a form. I'll be waiting for our adjournment here. Correspondents, noncommittee reports.
Hello.
Yeah. Noncommittee reports. Millerfield.
Millerfield has not met since our last council meeting.
Okay. Public safety.
Public safety.
Okay. Public safety met on September 24th, 2019 at 6:30 in the Joseph Harvey Room. Bike lane on Veterans Road is the agenda. All committee members were present. Councilors Phil Montgomery, Peter Christopher, and myself. Residents Gary Ward, John Stanley. Transportation Committee members Chris Aiello, Julia Waller, Centesac member, John Ead. All participated during the public comment period regarding the prospect of painting a bike lane on Veterans Road. Veterans Road was measured by DPW Director Callow and results indicated it was not wide enough in several areas. Road surface was inconsistent, angle parking danger, and being the recommended Mass Highway six-foot lane down to a minimum of four feet would give bicyclists a false sense of safety. It was noted that Veterans Road is a major truck route with oversized heavy-duty trucks. It's a busy bus route and has constant daily traffic. The conclusion was an alternative bike lane route to Veterans Road should be discussed further and funding for a traffic engineer per Chris Aiello's comments would also need to be identified. Following the discussion, a motion was made by Councilor Montgomery not to paint bike lanes on Veterans Road but to seek other alternatives for bike routes. A vote was taken. The vote was unanimous and passed Councilor Montgomery's motion. Motion to adjourn by Councilor Montgomery. Meeting was adjourned at 7:15. In addition to these minutes, TESAC minutes and DPW feasibility study will be included and will be put on the website.
Any discussion?
No.
Capital assets.
Capital assets met this evening prior to our original council meeting at 5:30. Three. We, Councilor Luteri and myself, were attending. We had a motion to declare Council on Agent Van deemed surplus and it was voted unanimous to make that surplus a piece of property for sale or for disposal. We also discussed later on about any updates on the Paksun Recreation reuse or where we would put the Paksun Rec in the future if need be. And we have reached out to numerous available spots or potential various spots, which would be the old Art Fellow Hall, the Methodist Church, and the old St. John's. We haven't heard back from the Archdiocese. We have heard back from Mr. Started from the Methodist Church who's very interested in possibly housing the Paksun Rec there, and we have not heard from the Art Fellows. We voted to adjourn and meet at another potential date down the road.
Town Ministers reported.
Thank you. So, the first item is our FY '20 Chapter 70 numbers. After we finalized our budget in the town of Winthrop, the state finalized their budget at the end of July. The Division of Local Services recently put out an updated cherry sheet for the final state budget, and that's the breakdown of what we're getting in local aid in different categories. So, Chapter 70 funding, again, is school funding. The final fiscal '20 state budget provides $7,343,000 in Chapter 70 funding. This is an increase of $106,730,000 over what was approved by Town Council in the FY '20 budget. Of note, the FY '20 budget approved by the council assumed $66,832 in charter school reimbursement, which was based on the final budget passed by the House. The updated cherry sheet, again, provides only $17,816 in charter school reimbursement, which is a decrease of $49,016 from the resources which we had assumed in our fiscal '20 budget. Thus, the net increase in education aid for Winthrop this year is $57,714. I will submit a motion for the next, or the CFO will be submitting a motion on behalf of my office for the next Town Council meeting to increase the school department's fiscal '20 budget by $57,714. In the last meeting, I was asked for an Ingleside Park update, and I will, you know, he's not here. Well, you are here. So, here's the update. It consists of a feasibility study and a concept level design to provide storm drain infrastructure improvements for the watershed, including Ingleside Park and the Center Business District areas. The study included hydraulic modeling to size the proposed drainage system for the 25-year design storm and projected sea level rise. An alternative analysis was performed to evaluate potential alternatives to increase resiliency and reduce the frequency of flooding. The alternative that provided the greatest flood mitigation improvements is presented in the conceptual level design, which includes increasing capacity of the existing storm drain system, upgrading the existing outfall and tide gate at Donovan's Beach, and providing underground storage and a pump station to manage peak flows. The proposed improvements will provide the needed storage during smaller storm events, limit capacity reduction in the drainage system due to tidal influx, and provide the system with ability to drain when storms occur during rising tide cycles or for larger storm events that exceed the system's storage capacity. Very similar to what happened last year. Underground storage is a viable option, viable solution for Ingleside Park due to its urban location and the limited availability of open lane. Permit applications for the post-improvements are being submitted. The next phase of the project will include developing 100% design documents suitable to bid the project and obtaining the necessary permit approvals to construct the improvements. In addition to upgrading the existing storm drainage at Ingleside Park, constructing underground storage and a pump station, and constructing upgrades to the tide gate and outfall at Donovan's Beach, it is anticipated the project will include storm drain improvements to relocate the outlet of the Center Business District Drainage System through Wheelock Street. Based on the information provided to Wood and Current, the outlet for the Center Business District System is currently located under the gymnasium for the former middle school. The relocation of this drainage outlet will include upgrades to the sewer system on Pleasant Streets, Wheelock Street, and Palm Meyer Street. If anyone would like additional information concerning this project, please feel free to reach out to my office. There was a new education financing bill that came out in the Senate last week. The state legislature is currently debating a major bill that would provide meaningful increases in education aid for communities. This is called the Student Opportunity Act. Would provide over $1.4 billion in new Chapter 70 aid over and above inflation when fully implemented over the next 70 years. Again, I will kind of skip over some of the particulars of this, but if you'd like more information of this state-level legislation, feel free to reach out. We are actively asking the state to fix the funding formula for education at every opportunity that we have. I have an update on the Arthur T. Cummings Playground, which comes from the superintendent, and she had sent it to the school committee. I'm going to read her words and then give some, one or two thoughts on it. So, this was from yesterday, and sorry for reading all of this again. Since the appropriation of funding by the Town Council, we have been actively working on a timeline for the installation of new playground equipment and a new surface at the Arthur T. Cummings School. This is a process that requires several steps, beginning with seeking quotes, investigating the need for RFPs, and posting if need be, completing a final selection of vendor, finalizing the playground design templates, determining community build interest and involvement, contracting the selected vendor, reviewing impacts of scheduling dates, finalizing schedules, and some other items. It is important to understand that over the past two years, and based on the recommendations of the 2016 Town Playground Inspection Report, the school department has made many adjustments, repairs, and equipment removal to the existing play structure, and conducted weekly school custodial checks of the playground area. During this two-year time period, we have also had a follow-up meeting with the original inspector from Playground Inspections of New England, created a school-based playground committee, sought multiple quotes from GameTown, excuse me, from GameTown MRC Playground, Utility Playground, submitted the first capital improvement request to the Town Council, provided multiple updates to the school department, facilities director, Buildings and Ground Subcommittee and School Committee, communicated with the representative from Maya, which is our insurance agency, regarding liability, and reviewed accident reports as submitted from the school nurse and Arthur T. Cummings principals. All of the above actions have focused on providing a safe place for our students. There is no doubt that we are all in support of installing a new playground, and I will reiterate that we are all in support of installing a new playground with updated equipment and a new surface as soon as possible, and we are committed to do so without delay. My most recent communication with Utility Play, and this is the superintendent, was related to a reasonable estimate of completed project now that the funding has been secured. I've been informed that the spring 2020 is a reasonable estimate of completion, given the parameters of weather necessary to install the surface, which is done after site preparation and installation of the new equipment. This is being, it's still a current event. We are still working on this, and the superintendent may be making some announcements this Thursday concerning the continued opening of that playground. So, two more items. The yard waste collection facility will be reopened on October 4th, which is Friday. So, all those yard clippings that have been sitting around, we are very excited to take them again and help you all compost them. And this Saturday, there will be a flu clinic from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the senior center. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Just a couple. First of all, I appreciate on the Chapter 70 money. I'm glad that that was taken care of quickly, and there'll be a motion to get that money to the schools. I appreciate that. Last week, we mentioned on the bonding for the Senate infrastructure project, I want to say it was a couple hundred thousand under the authorization. Just for clarification, that includes all the hardscapes, correct? Sidewalks?
Uh huh.
Okay. And I did ask for tonight, which thank the CFO. Excuse me? She's here. Thank you. For a balance on all the stabilization funds, I get concerned because I'm not sure when we're going out to do the bonding. Has our bond rating remained the same? Are we in good shape?
Our bond rating has, yes.
Balances have depleted substantially as a percentage of our.
Our bond rating has remained the same. We actually just took on a new bond counsel. They're going through all of our previous documentation with us, and we're very excited to work with them. They're a little more hands-on than our previous bond counsel, and they are very knowledgeable of what's going on with this situation. So, they're helping us, and we are running, they have a calculator that we can utilize to put different financial scenarios in, and will tell us, it will flag things if they think they will negatively impact our bond rating. So, again, that's something I've committed to, is trying to maintain the bond rating that we have. So, we are taking that into account with every project that we take on.
I know we're very proud that we saved $8 million on the schools, on the middle and high schools, compared over the length of the binding, and just wanted to make sure that our bond rating maintains that so we don't end up costing ourselves money in the long run. So, thank you for that. Yep.
Anyone else? Question? School department update. The town manager updated us, basically, and had the superintendent reporting on the update of the Arthur T. Cummings Playground. She also advised the school committee that the threat assessment team will be bringing specialists in to ensure the district is complying with all the necessary guidelines to protect the safety and well-being of all the students attending the school system. The school committee did go into executive session to discuss collective bargaining. That was the September 23rd meeting. Okay. On the whole business, capital assets committee. Do you have a motion?
I have a motion to declare the Van from the Council on Agent is surplus.
Okay. This comes out with a favorable recommendation, and if you don't get a second on it, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the aye's have. Paksun Rec, we're gonna discuss. Council, do you want to say anything on the recommendation of the DPW committee?
I have nothing to add.
New business. In your package was the marijuana bylaws that came back from the planning board. Any discussion on it? I do know that we have to refer it back. That's how the process works. Refer it back to the planning board, so I would like to take a motion to do that.
You have a bunch of bylaws to the planning board for review, come back to the council.
Wait a second. Discussion on the motion. Here we go. Take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the aye's have. Discussion of Chapter 70 funding. Jim?
I thank the town manager for his quick response and appreciate the fact that the schools will be getting an increase of their budget of $57,000 and change.
Okay. Discussion, Town Council meeting in November 4th form. Election night is November 5th, which would be Tuesday night, which would be a normal council meeting. So, I would like to take a motion to move the meeting to Thursday, November 7th.
Motion to suspend council rules and change the November meeting schedules to Thursday, November 7th, and Tuesday, November 19th.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion of the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the aye's have. Public comments. Yes. There will be a public comment section during the public hearing. This is for generalities.
Yes, I'm aware of that.
Thank you.
And I look forward to the public hearing in the map and trying to get some resolution of a problem that has been plaguing us for the last couple of years. I love to talk about that. For the last, for two years ago, myself, many of my neighbors, many of the citizens came before the council and said, "We think we've got a problem with the center zoning, there's a problem with how much participation there were, and the nature of it, and so forth." Over the last year, we've been promised multiple times that the council was going to take up a review of the matter. They were going to look into it. The council, in a very cavalier and unprecedented method, disposed quickly of a citizen's petition that was filed under the relevant provision of the charter. But that night, they said, "Oh, don't worry. We're going to address this. We're going to deal with it." I've been promised and promised, and my neighbors have been promised, over and over again, that this was going to happen. I don't know when the council stopped meaning that they were going to do that. Was it at the night you told us they was going to do it, or is it now? But there's been nothing done. There's no method of addressing it, no method of talking about it. We've asked constantly, "Can you convene some kind of a forum? Can you take a look at this stuff?" Now, we've gotten some support. Councilor Montgomery wouldn't vote for the postponement of the petition. Other people have recused themselves, other people have stepped forward. But we still haven't had it happen, despite the promises. So, if you're going to keep promising it, tell us when it's going to be. If you're not going to do it, I think we ought to know that.
Anyone else who should be heard? Yes.
Todd Zaco, Precinct 2. I had the opportunity to watch last meeting and notice the agenda for this meeting, and I just, I have to get this off my chest. We have serious issues, and to even have a discussion and see resources wasted on this foolishness with this bike lane when I can't drop my clippings off has got me in a tizzy. We have priorities here, people. Can you please tend to those and not waste our time and tax dollars on something that is about as ridiculous as anything can be due to the safety concerns alone? Can we move on and get the business done that needs to get done, please? Thank you.
Anyone else who should be heard? Karen?
Karen, Chavis, Precinct 2. I want to thank the capital assets committee for continuing with the Paksun Rec and looking for hope for them. The other thing, I recently attended a pre-voting meeting with poll workers, and I still believe that the question on the ballot, even though Councilor Montgomery told me if I vote yes, it means I don't want marijuana in the town, I think it's still very, very unclear as far as the citizens of the town are concerned. And I would hope that either through the council or the town manager's office or the town clerk's office, that something will go out to the voters to make it easier for them to understand exactly what they're voting for. I think when they voted before, yes for marijuana, I'm not sure that everybody 100% understood. And I do believe that we need to have this straightened out before November 5th. Thank you. Oh, fire station. Any update on that? That's the only other thing.
Nick Seotis, Precinct 5. As you know, many of us have been coming to these meetings for three years. Obviously, there's a root to this problem and how it all transpired. It goes back to 2014. You cannot change every ordinance without citizen participation, without the constituents, without the abutters being there. This has put us into some type of town chaos. You now have several lawsuits going on. I'm not going to get into them, but they're in neighborhoods, several neighborhoods. People are really concerned. If there was dialogue from the beginning, I truly believe the development probably would have gone up now if we had found a reasonable compromise. You can't tell us, three years ago, when we stood at this meeting, someone said to us, "Oh, we posted it at the town hall, and we put it in the transcript." That does, that does not fly with people. But that's what we were told, something so important to all of us. You know, we've said this time in and time again. We've had a proposal that has been done, a quality-of-life proposal that not one previous counselor responded to. We had very bright people working on that. We are very concerned that in some way, without being really adamant about it, we are trying to tell you that you are going against 17.5, which says you don't want to change the character of the center. You are changing the character of the center. It is not the CBD, it's becoming the CRD, Center Residential District, in an area that was once a swamp from maps, in an area that we know is a flood zone. One of the developers stood up at the Ebenean School and said she didn't even know there was a river under there. Well, there is water under there. We can work with the developers. Both the developers we've talked to, and we have been forthright. Something has to happen here that brings the whole town together. It's getting rather obvious now. There are a lot of different things going on. I'm going to talk about one of them. Are we staying within our budget? This, I've seen this project go from $4 million to $14 million. I think we all want development, but we want responsible development. The developers do not tell us, longtime residents, longtime taxpayers, what they're going to do. We're going to predicate to them how we want things done in our town. We have all been volunteers. We've been working for years as volunteers. When we had to go to bat for the new high school, we voted for the new high school. We had to vote for Millerfield, we voted for Millerfield. Grandparents, parents, override after override. And now, we see that the brunt of all this infrastructure is going to be borne by the taxpayer as well as the water payer of this town. We have to seriously live within our means. I think we can find a resolution with the developers. But the developers have to understand, this is a town that has charm, that has history. We do not really want to change the high standard of living we have, where neighbor knows neighbor and people go out of their way to help out, whether it's someone sick or a family's been burnt out of their home. This is very important because we have to look at the humanity aspect of this, and every one of us, we've been here for a long time. We run the town, the people. This is a democracy. We do not want people who are interlopers coming in here for a profit and changing our way of life. I hope the council realizes we can't find compromise, but there has to be reason. Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Thank you.
Can you come down here, Jack, please?
I'm not sure if we're going to have, a Jackdaw, Precinct 3. I'm not sure if we're going to be able to have a hearing because there's not a forum, I guess.
If we're not, I will open it up and we will still have a discussion.
All right. Thank you. People are noticing that this map that was passed out today has changed once again on Fremont Street. I'm wondering, and it doesn't have to be answered this, but I'm just wondering when it was done. And on the agenda, the planning board tells us, people that are interested, to look at the six meetings that they, where they discussed the Center Business District. I looked at all six meetings. Some of the meetings don't have minutes. The meetings that do have minutes maybe mention the Center Business District in one sentence or two sentences in two meetings. So, I don't know how people are supposed to understand what goes on at planning board meetings if you can't look up their minutes. And I've been saying this for two years. All the, all the meetings I have attended with the planning board have broken down into chaos, every single one of them. And it looks like whoever changed this map is going to start some more chaos. What I did find, an addendum 24, I think this was written by Terry Delahanty about the history of the Center Business District. At a planning board meeting, April 14th, 2014, they may have discussed zoning laws. They did. But the most interesting thing, sentence in the public comment period that I found was a gentleman named David Kelson asked if the board was considering changes to waterfront zone at this time. And I'm reading this from the minutes. Chairman Roach noted that no recommendations are being considered for the waterfront district at this point. So, Winthrop by the sea, Winthrop that is surrounded by saltwater. The planning board did not want to entertain any thought of changing zoning to something that could be very useful to the town as far as a tax base. All the other cities and towns are developing waterfront property. Two recent condominiums in Boston sold for $10 million apiece simply because they were on the Atlantic Ocean. Nothing has been discussed about this. I find that very disturbing. Since 2014, when the planning board and other people decided to change the Center Business District zoning, this town has been transfixed. Nothing has been done in this town since 2014. It seems like we're going to be mired in lawsuits. There are a few pending. No one talks about the millions of dollars that are owed to. I find that very disturbing. Since 2014, when the planning board and other people decided to change the Center Business District zoning, this town has been transfixed. Nothing has been done in this town since 2014. It seems like we're going, going to be mired in lawsuits. There are a few pending. No one talks about the millions of dollars that are owed to individuals in this town with lawsuits. I don't know where we're going to get the money. It doesn't seem like we have any. No one's discussed it in over a year. At this point, I think the only solution to this problem that we have concerning money, development, zoning changes, et cetera, is to go back to a town meeting form of government. And I, I understand that some people have talked about this. I think it should be spearheaded by somebody. We would certainly save a lot of money and salaries with assistance, assistance to assistance, and different people that have been put on the payroll in the town of Winthrop in the last, I would say, four or five years. So I hope somebody takes up the effort to change this form of government back to a town meeting form of government. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Anyone else who should be heard? Okay. We're going to give five minutes recess. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, welcome back. We're going to finish up, we're going to finish up the council meeting. Public Relations, there's a flu clinic, I think we heard about that already. The Chamber of Commerce has the civil Winthrop at the Cottage Park Yard Club on the 1st of November, and of course, the election is the 5th of November, and on the 19th of November is the annual fall forum. Motion to, yes?
The forum announced on Precinct Two meeting, we're going to have the votes from Monday night to 7th between 6:00 and 8:00 at the House.
Okay. Motion to adjourn meeting.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Paul O'Taylor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we do have a call from both legislative bodies, and this is a legal notice, it's a joint public hearing, the town council and the Winthrop Planning Board, that's for the Center Business District amending zone back, Tuesday, October 1st, 2019, at the DeLeo Center at 6:00 p.m. Notices hereby given at the Town Council and the Winthrop Planning Board, conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, October 1st, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. at the DeLeo Senior Center, 35 Harvard Street, Winthrop, Massachusetts, on the Center Business District amended zoning map. At said hearing, all interested persons will be given an opportunity to hear it. A draft copy of the map will be discussed, is available, it was on the website, as we all know, the clerk's office. All right, so, we'll open, I call this council to order. Do we have a roll call, please, for the council?
Councilor Engmann?
Present.
Councilor Kristopop?
Here.
Councilor Boncori?
Here.
Councilor DiMarco?
Here.
Councilor Frino?
Here.
Councilor LaCorte?
Present.
Vice President Latieri?
Here.
President Beckham?
Here. Planning Board?
Ah, planning board calls our meeting to open hearing to order, or to open, I didn't even say that. The planning board calls the open, the public hearing open, do a call.
Dave Stacio?
Present.
Hayden Demento?
Present.
Chris Boyce?
Present.
Dave Proctor?
Present.
Anna Marisaret?
Vincent Sapula?
Here.
Steve Kudlakas?
Okay. There are two maps, the map that was posted on the website, which is an interpretation of what the council thought that the planning board had. We tried to clarify it by coming up with another map, that's the map that you have in your hand. There is some differences between what the planning board draft is, and what is reality as far as the ones in front of you. So I'm going to open this up to a discussion. Just give us your name, keep it to three minutes, give us your input as to relative what you feel about either of the maps, and you can get clarification, we'll, we'll have the planning board clarify exactly what the designation that they are actually approving in their draft. Gina, do you want to make a?
Sure. So I'm, I'm going to clarify off of this map that I believe everybody has in their hand.
Jimmy, Jimmy.
So first of all, the, the light blue area, our recommendation was to not include that in the CBD. Those areas are what we believed, what we believed should not be put in the CBD at this time, but do require a priority as it relates to attention by the town, by the town council, because they are so important and need to be addressed. Our concern was that we didn't want to hold up having a formal map, so that the town could continue and move forward from all of this sort of chaos. Our intent with our summary that we sent to town council was to exclude from the CBD for those priority parcels, the middle school, which is currently highlighted in light blue, the Viking Gardens area, which is not highlighted right now, at the bottom of the page, as well as Fremont Street. And for Fremont Street, that blue area should go across Fremont Street, be both sides. So 19 down to 45 should also be blue. And then we also did not, to our recollection, include, and I can barely read this, so I apologize, the part of Winthrop Street where the apartment building and the three former funeral homes are, which our understanding is those are all residential buildings, we did, did not include those either. So I hope that, I hope that helps.
Okay. Okay, anybody who should be heard?
Good evening. First of all, thank you for having this joint meeting tonight. Donna Segretti-Riley, Precinct Five, 30 Cottage Park Road. First of all, I'd like to say that this particular map is a better rendering of what's in and what's out of the Center Business District. My question, one of my questions this evening was, were there residences, were there houses, homes in the CBD district? And it appears that this map does. Clarifying that specifically, 20 Cottage Park Road, 23 Cottage Park Road, 22 and 24 Bartlett, Bartlett Road are not in the Center Business District. And I say thank you for that, because in the past, we have seen lines drawn around these residences. And in a previous appeals board meeting, there was serious question about one of the residences that is going on unfortunately to legal, on legal, legal appeal. My, my question though is about Fremont Street, and you mentioned 19, but is, is that, I'm confused about Fremont Street, and if you could better clarify that, number 15 Fremont Street, particularly, which is next door to the previous old union room, number 15, it's a very small house, and that's in purple, I mean, is that supposed to be blue or purple? And in all of those houses, they're on, all of those residences on Fremont Street, from number 15, is it 19?
23, 25.
23, 25, all of those. Yes. Are they, are they, they in the Center Business District?
No, not, not in our, not in our recommendation.
Not in the recommendations.
They're not in the recommendation. Okay, so they're not even blue, they should be white?
They should be blue.
Light blue, okay, starting with 15, which is right adjacent to the?
It's really hard for us to see it, so.
We're trying to also clarify that this isn't a land use map. So we're not trying to say residents in, current homes in, current homes out. This is future zoning to this day forward in Winthrop. So what Gina's trying to clarify is you're looking on Fremont Street?
Yep.
22 on the north side of the plan, down to 29 where you see light blue? That, and directly across the street from 19 down to 45, that would also be light blue in our recommendation.
Yeah. But what happens to 15 Fremont? I mean, that's a tiny little house next door to the previous mortgage place and the DeLeo Room previous to that. It's a large structure at the corner of Fremont and Vauling, but next door is 15 Fremont, and it's a tiny little residence. And where are we? What color should that be?
That'd be purple. 19, we're going directly across.
No, number 15, 15.
I understand, yep, I understand.
It should be what color?
That'd be purple, so we're taking the light blue from 22 directly across the street to 19.
But that's a residence, 15.
There are a lot of residents.
No, I can't hear with these two people.
Trying to clarify, this isn't a land use map? This is going to be a zoning map for this, the town going forward.
And what's, what's the height under, yeah, according to the attached documents we have, they're all four-story possibilities.
That's correct.
Which, you know, is a huge issue across the town, whether you're talking about the center down at Somerset, from 10 to 26, or whether you're talking Shirley Street, 130 to 140. 10 stories is, is like out of control in this particular town, where we're all built out, we're kind of living on top of each other with density. And I just, you know, I, I'm not sure how we address that four-story issue. They backed to 2014, and I'm alluding to some of the comments that Mr. Seotis made earlier also, you know? Four stories is a lot, because it really impacts with added congestion, cars, parking, and people. And it presents real safety issues. So it's in, not just in the center, but it's in other pockets of town that are being hit with this four-story thing, which I think is out of control, and we need some way to address it, whether the way is to reconvene and meet with a special committee of sorts to go back to the 2014. And I'm sure, as I said at one of the precinct neighborhood meetings to Councillor Christopher, is I'm sure there were a lot of really good ideas back in the 2014 forum that took place there. And we shouldn't throw the baby out of the bath, we should try to gather up some of the good, positive, creative things that came out of that 2014 report, and all the 25 meetings where, you know, a lot of people worked hard, and just take another look, but this time with more resident input. Four-story thing, it is going to kill our town, it really is. I just have real problems with that. But thank you for this opportunity this evening.
Jean Cawthorn, Precinct Five. I just want to maybe reiterate or back up what Donna said. I do thank you for coming up with this amount of proposed boundary now. Makes me feel a bit better seeing our homes, they did have lines around them, were included in purple before, not having that pictured here tonight. It does disbought me still that it just says proposed. I'd love to see it say finalized, so just a word there. So I do just want to say, I think what Donna said about four stories, I think if that happens to be allowed, and it starts happening around, it's set in precedent, it's going to set, it's going to explode just all over town. There's, you know, we, we have to obey the rules and the zoning rules and things that are in place. So I just want to say on the topic of zoning maps, I've spoken numerous times over the past three years, and I'm hoping tonight that we all hear a responsible answer that we've been asking for. How zoning appeals board was allowed to make a decision on a person's home, and I know that home appears that it's out tonight, but without a map in place, it's just really beyond me. Once again, I had said that that was putting the, the cart way before the horse, and I don't even know how that happened that night, or how it even got let go to that, with nothing finalized. So houses mine included, ours included, that have been put in jeopardy to enhance and attract developers to come into the town, to break rules and bend ordinances. I hope we can all move on with responsible, respectful development that benefits all. It's been a long three years with many town officials and elected officials that have come and gone, many promising to make things right, move on, you know, to green a pasture and we never see them again. We're still left, you know, here asking for the same question and resolution. They've all stepped down, or people recuse, and we're still waiting for answers, that have, you know, gets bounced back and forth. We've got the answer twice from a couple of town manager, town manager Delahanty at the time, and from Mr. Leguey, who was the building inspector, and we were told the zoning commissioner, who had all the power at that point. We got those answers, and they were all upstaged by the zoning appeals board. I don't know how that happened, so that I'm still puzzled by. So please settle this, so we can all get on with a good quality of life, and continue to live and thrive in, you know, the town that we all do love, that we're all really committed to and want to see a better place. We all want the best for it, and best for the citizens that reside and live here. So thank you all.
Tom Riley, 30 Cottage Park Road. First of all, I want to commend the planning board for their efforts. The planning board took, took this task very seriously, worked very hard at it, has brought us a long way from where we've been in terms of clarity, to what actually constitutes the Center Business District. They were able to see through a whole number of distortions that were placed in front of them, or other maps that proposed to be the Center Business District, and proposals to change the Center Business District to include residences, including mine and my neighbors, and add us into the Center Business District. But they saw through all of that, and they came up with a map, they took a look at it and said, what was owned, what's the existing Center Business District right now? There's a couple of places that I saw coming in, I think Gina's, Demento has addressed those, told us that they've, that where they were maybe want to stand. I do have a question, procedurally, what happens tonight? We've got, got a map before the council. When will it be adopted?
We will vote on it at the next meeting, the 15th. Okay. And by then, we will have a crystallized map based on.
All right. I, I would, I would ask that you have somebody take a look at number 15 Fremont Street in particular. Okay? That's, and I understand the confusion over what's happened at Fremont Street and so forth, but if we're going to exclude the rest of the houses on that, on the street, the first house down there, we ought to take a, that's a hard look at, just to see where that is. Also some properties up on Borough, on Borough Terrace. But we have, we've gone through enough, I think the, I wish the planning board had been asked a year earlier to do what they've done, and I think they should have been, but they, when they, once they were, they went right at it, they put it together. We've got some clarity, we've got a map that shows the parcels, you can take a look at it, you can put down, you can take a look at the other zoning maps, and you can see where they've done a pretty good job, a very good job of matching everything up. I hope the thing can be moved along very quickly, it's long, long overdue. This thing should have been dealt with in January of 2018, when Terry Delahanty did his report, and we knew that there were mistakes, we knew that there was confusion. And I think some of that confusion, I believe, a lot of that confusion was deliberate, but I think we've got a chance tonight to settle it, to solve it, to, to move on and get this thing done. Thank you.
Anything else?
Precinct Five, I just wanted to thank the board for excluding the Wexford Mountains from the proposed map that came up before. And I wrote a long letter to you guys, which I'm not going to read, and I appreciate that you, that you addressed it. I did have a question from 20 Cottage Park Road, what is the boundary there? What is the boundary there? At some point, it was about the boundary of the land, and then at the other point, there was a recommendation that part of the land was in the Center Business District. Is the property line now the border?
Yeah. It's, we have, the line is, it's the border, it's the property line, yeah, the parcel.
It's property, okay, thank you. Thanks again for, for the, for the rest.
Anyone else?
Hi, Kathleen Capuccio, Precinct Two, Forty-Nine Waldemar Ave. And I apologize if I missed this. So is this, is this map being presented by the planning board to the council? So when it says the Center Business District in purple, is that currently what the planning board or the council feels is the current CBD?
This is their draft map to the council.
To the council, great, okay, sorry, I just, I was confused about that. So the priority parcels recommended, excuse me, recommended for inclusion in a modified CBD. So it appears from what Gina said that nineteen through forty-five Fremont should have been in blue. Were those the only ones? I wasn't sure if I missed something that should have actually been in blue and not, or not in purple?
That's right.
Yes.
Correct.
Well, six and twelve Jefferson, and the first three houses on Winthrop Street where the funeral homes used to be, I believe.
Yeah, that wasn't blue.
That should be in white.
That should be in white, so.
So the top of Jefferson Street.
Top of Jefferson at Winthrop Street. There's a purple area, which is the apartment building, and then used to be the funeral homes.
Okay. Is it, is it possible before the council votes on this, that there could be another map maybe posted publicly?
Yup.
Just because I think there's, I know I was confused. And no, no disrespect, I mean, again, I think the planning board board has really done a phenomenal job with this. But if we could just, I just think for clarity's sake, I know I'm a bit confused, I am in a butter, I live on Waldemar Ave. So I just, I think that would just be helpful to everyone to know when this does come to a vote, what, what we're voting on. That would just be great. And then as for the priority parcels that are being recommended for inclusion to the CBD by the planning board, so is that, because I, I was a little confused. It sounded as though, and I may have misheard you Gina, that the planning board did not want the light blue or light purple included? So I guess who, who was recommending those for inclusion?
The light blue area is a recommendation that the planning board made to town council that there be a modified CBD?
Okay, okay.
We are recommending they not, that area not be included in the CBD, but we were highlighting them as areas of priority that should be addressed by the council in the future.
Okay, excellent.
Expeditiously.
Great, thank you.
Going back to those light blue areas on Fremont, my understanding is that there are some larger developments that will be abutting that light blue area that will be coming in front of the planning board. Steven Heinz, Precinct Two and Six. So that light blue area, my understanding is that there are several larger developments that will be coming in front of you that abut that light blue area directly. And so when, so I agree that it's a priority spot, but to modify it, my suggestion is just to be careful with sort of what people have in the plans already around that site, because there are three of them that will not at you yet, but will be there.
Yeah, that's, so that's helpful. We are not aware of any.
Oh, I know that, yeah.
Coming for us.
I know that.
And the modified is to be determined.
Yeah.
We don't, we, our, our thought is that there, it shouldn't be the same as the CBD, but it shouldn't be residential.
You might want to expedite that to avoid another Somerset situation, because you're about to get smacked with a few large projects.
Got it.
So, okay.
Thanks.
Greg, oh, I'm sorry. After this one.
My name's Ruth Coke Ashton. I'm in Precinct Five. I have several questions. One is, even though it's more convenient for the planning board to say, oh, number fifteen Fremont isn't right across the street from twenty-two, so it shouldn't be in light blue? If you have that as purple in the Center Business District, then whatever's at fifty-four Fremont gets the pass as far as the two and a half. So this seems like a deliberate setup to the person that lives in that house, that you're going to have the same thing that you had on Cottage Park Road. So my question is, why? Why would you do that again?
There were certain areas in the zoning, within the CBD that we felt was appropriate to stay in, some residential, some business, and they were all discussed for very specific reasons. I, I can't really state that specifically to that one parcel.
So my second was.
But that's not, that wouldn't be the only residential building or property that we're recommending be included.
I'm sorry?
That isn't the only residential, like, that's not the only property that somebody lives at that is included. I mean, all of the ones on Pauline Street and Herman Street, those are residential. There's other ones on, within the CBD that have.
Right, but this is exactly like what you have happened.
And currently nineteen is, and has never actually been questioned, not nineteen, fifteen has always been as part of the CBD that was never questioned.
As well as eighteen.
As well as eighteen. It always has been part of the CBD. So are you asking us if we want to change it?
Yes, since you're changing twenty-two to forty-five, why aren't you including fifteen?
We felt the area was, we felt the area made more sense over on this side than it did over here.
So my second question is, how much did it cost to have this map done by Foreman Place?
We didn't.
And how many more maps are we going to have? You're saying you have a meeting, you have two maps, and neither one of them are accurate, right? So.
Well, these are proposed maps, draft maps, so it's up to be accurate because they're part of a fluid conversation that we're having here. You know, so, so we're interpreting, there's some mistakes in interpretation, but this is also fluid dialogue. So there's no accuracy yet in a draft, just to point that out. That, we're listening to your feedback, I mean, as a board and as a town council, and the map will evolve as we move until we have a finalized vote on that.
As it relates to the cost, the planning board didn't hire anybody. The town representatives did, so you can ask them.
So my next question is, does, how, that's great that Cottage Park Road, these two houses that we've been talking about for years and years are not on this map. How does that affect the development, the ruling from the zoning board that you already did based on another map?
We, we can't speak to that.
Doesn't.
So every time, so we're just going to have a parade of maps?
Once this map is adopted, the map is law. Once it's adopted, it hasn't been adopted yet.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
And incidentally, after this meeting, this gets, this council, this will be referred to rules and ordinances. They will hold another hearing prior to our meeting on the fifteenth, where anyone can attend, and you can make recommendations and, you know, point out why you think certain things should be in or out to the rules and ordinance meeting, because they're the ones that are going to make the final recommendation to the full council. Okay? Someone who hasn't spoken, yes, sir.
My name is Walt Homel, and I'm from Pico Ave. My, my question is, will there be a map, a final, definitive, accurate map that everybody can see?
Yup.
And have time to look at and contemplate before the final meeting or it will be adopted?
Yes.
And how will we get access, everybody, to that map?
We'll get it on the website, we'll have some printed up, it'll be in the clerk's office, it'll be in the town manager's office. We'll have it distributed.
Excellent, excellent. How, how far advanced before the adoption night will that be available to everybody?
We are supposed to vote on it the fifteenth.
Of?
Rules and Ordinance will have a meeting prior to the fifteenth.
Of October?
Yes.
So, so that's the night that the final app will be adopted?
At council meeting.
And when will the public have to see that map before the fifteenth? How long before the fifteenth?
Soon as we get, get it resolved.
I mean, the twelfth, thirteenth? So that, that it will be run minute tonight?
We'll try. Just keep in mind that under the law, under how this whole process works, the council has ninety days from tonight. They have to vote within ninety days. We're trying to expedite the process, only because of what's happened.
I appreciate that, holy, I just want to make sure that everybody wants to know.
The Chair of Rules and Ordinance is going to have this meeting on the eighth. As soon as we get that resolved, we'll have the thing, at least a draft of it on the website, at the very least.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Gagnon, this is my story. Thank you.
Great.
Hi, I'm Greg Kersey, and I own the property.
Come up to the mic, please.
Hi, my name's Greg Kersey, and I own the property at number twenty Madison Avenue. And it formerly was a telephone company building, and then it was Knights of Columbus, and it was a Dan School. And now I occupy it as a single-family rep, it's sort of mixed use, I guess, and as a commercial art studio, it was a business. And the, right, you have it spot-zoned as residential. Adjacent to me is a Verizon building, I guess that's really a business. And on the other side of me is a mixed-use property, the owner's at Coghlan, and he has a small warehouse space that is being, he, he uses partially for his, storage for his rock business. It's not a garage, it's, it has a loading dock on the street, and it's, it's a, it's a commercial property adjacent to me. And my own property is a large brick building, it doesn't look at all like a house. The only reason it's ended up as a single-family zoning was because it was abandoned for two years prior to my purchase, purchasing it, and I've resurrected, resurrected, the building inspector at the time allowed me to have my art studio, commercial art studio, and it's a business, I'm not, it's a business. And he allowed me to have it there as long as I agreed to remodel it and use it and occupy it as a single-family house. I think that the value of the property to the town has greatly diminished. It's very difficult, it's been very difficult for me to get a zoning, any sort of mortgage on the property over the years, or any kind of financing, because it's a, a non-conforming building essentially. It's a seven thousand square foot brick building that's, doesn't, like I said, doesn't at all look like a house. And I'd like you to consider to include it in, I, my preference would be for it to be Center Business zoned in the blue, or, or, I mean, purple, or the blue priority, either one. But I believe that zoning is incorrect, and that I, as I said, I'm spot-zoned, I'm surrounded, I have business on either side of me, I have a church in back of me, I abut the town parking lot. Since I believe zoning for my, my property is incorrect.
Thank you.
Yes, that's Verizon.
That's Verizon, and that's a, that's also a commercial building.
That should be a commercial building that's Verizon, there's actually two other, at least two other telecommunications buildings in there that they sublet your property.
The next building though is, is back to residential, is that correct?
As you go down the street, there are, there are two, multiple, two family and single-family kind of homes, which you, as you go down the end of the street. Those, speaking to those property owners, a number of them actually thought that their property had been what was, they considered Madison Avenue to be a, a commercial, part of the business district. They didn't realize that they were zoned. I mean, they're not using it for businesses, but they thought that Madison Avenue was a business street. And the other side of the street is a cemetery, so it's actually kind of, there aren't homes adjacent to where I am. The, the, the mixed-use property has, it does have a small single-family home, as well as the warehouse. It's not, it's not a garage, so it can't be, it has a raised floor, as I said, and it's, it's, it is a, it's being used as a warehouse, warehouse, it's, the basement's got like a ten-foot ceiling, it's got an Amazon warehouse, please ignore it, in the basement, and then the upstairs is a private business. So.
Thank you, Greg.
Okay, thanks.
Walt? Multiple boxes. I'll get you a second one. I got somebody in the back. Go ahead.
I'm Carol, Precinct Six. I, I do understand the need to sort of lay up and not include a middle school site in this conversation right now, because there are some things brewing for the Center Business District, and there's lots of stress about whether people are in or not in that district. However, I would say, don't wait too long. The middle school site is a huge opportunity for us. We've known about it for a very long time, since we were starting to plan the high school. We need to put these ducks in a row and get going on it. It's, it's, it's a big deal. I do like that I see the whole site from left to right, including the middle school and rink. I think that's an important discussion to have. But what I think we need to talk about is to kind of get past this technical glitch of a really bad map that was on the website, and one glitch that I shouldn't, not diminish the stress it caused. We should get past that and move into what we see as the vision for that site. It's very important to have one and have that conversation. It's not going to be a slam dunk to get eighteen thousand people to decide what happens there, and that conversation needs to start soon. It's costing us money. I don't think people realize that. People are advocating not to paint stripes on roads because we don't have money. Well, it's costing us like hundreds of thousands of dollars to keep the middle school sitting there with water in the pipes and heat going so the water in the pipes don't freeze. And it's just a massive drain on our, on our resources, which are also, as you know, I don't have to tell you, finite, right? So I would just say, you know, please, let's get, let's get, let's get the purple done quick, but let's start that conversation on the blue very quickly and try to get a vision of how to move forward. Thank you very much.
Lois Baxter, Precinct Two. Can I exactly say what he, what was his name? If you're going to vote on a CBD, vote on the whole area, not keep piecemealing people going against, if a developer wants to come in, be upfront how big his development can be, and I urge that nothing goes higher than four, four stories in this town. You all wanted a ferry service to have people come into the town because you wanted it to be a beautiful seaside community. Well, let's keep it that way. Right now, I can show you a map that they've done, that if we, rising sea levels, and if we were hit by a hurricane four, we wouldn't get out of this town, and three-fourths of this town would be flooded. We need to start thinking about climate change and what kind of development we're led into this town. Let's keep it a beautiful, small town with nothing more than three stories in the Center District and over at the E B, the old middle school. It's time, we, we can't even get out of this town now with traffic in the morning, and if Revere Beach, I mean, Beachmont is closed, we're sitting in traffic for an hour, and people started to say that if the Center was developed, they wouldn't have cars. Well, they're going to get on buses, and they're going to be sitting in traffic for an hour or two, because the buses can't make the loop fast enough if the traffic is bad. It's about time we really thought about this town and keeping it a nice, small seaside town with nothing more than three stories. Thank you.
I'm Tom Mona, Precinct Five. I just had a question regarding Madison Street proposal, gentleman staying in the back. There are a couple of, and I don't mean to rain on your parade or anything, yes, I don't mean to rain on your parade, but, you know, there are a couple of residences down there, and I think those people should be heard from before you consider doing something so drastic.
Not that they were adjacent to my property.
Well, I think they should probably be notified.
Okay, okay, guys, no crossfire.
Just to get some input from them, be sure, maybe you go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I turn to the back there? Yes.
I'm Mike, Precinct Five. I think, I'd like to make a comment that I think it's high time that all these board members need to take the town of Winthrop back rather than give it to the developers. It seems that they, the town, the town needs to be returned to the people and this town council, and not be designated, but developers need to be, are designated what they're going to do, not what they want to do.
Yes.
That's all.
I think that's the one thing I suggest to council. Look at how you communicate so that when they see a meeting notice, people understand what's at stake. That discussion is not what I want to get into today, nor should I, but I urge modesty in your speech and respect for the people that you disagree with. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Wendy Marley, Precinct 2. I have a question for you all about the Winthrop Street corridor, just for clarification. First church of Winthrop, which I just heard potentially has the opportunity to be housing our lovely Parks and Rec Department, immediately to the opposite side of that, for lack of better knowledge, was the old Leveque House. That is now also a business that has been purchased to be used as a business.
Education.
Education. So it's not going to be considered a business? I'm sorry? I didn't hear you.
The building is going to be by a nonprofit to run education. So would that be zoned as business or education?
If it's an educational use that's protected by Chapter 40, Section 3, then it's exempted as an educational use. I don't have any details of the process, so I can't say specifically, but educational use would not consider it business.
As far as zoning is concerned...
The only reason I was asking is because it would help with that kind of that curve of where it all ends, being Metcalf Square is where our business, Center Business District would start, at that neighborhood. And I'm not, please don't get me wrong, I'm 1,000% thrilled at what that building is becoming, I don't want that missed earth. But it also is adjacent to public parking, which is considered part of the CBD parking and all the parking things we've gone through for finding parking for CBD. So that might help as well, that means it's a lot behind the church. And then could someone re-clarify for me what is going to be considered business and not business on the west side, on the church side of the street, going from the church toward Cajeon?
So we can't speak to what is, but we can speak to what our proposal is?
Well, that's what you mean on this. I know we mentioned some of the...
On this, our proposal includes the northeast side, I guess, of Winthrop, from 211 down to 118, or 181. And on the northwest side, it ends at 5.
So that goes up to Mrs. Marley's.
Correct.
And then there's one residence, and then a business, and then a business.
I think there's two residences and another business.
Two?
Our goal isn't to try and find every business in the town and throw it into the CBD, it's just to draw a line.
Oh, I was just wondering what the understanding was, because I know we talked about some of that parking from those buildings.
Right. It was that building.
So if they are part of our parking, that we keep saying, we have parking, we're utilizing some of those lots, I think they should be included as a business district.
So I think for your purposes, just for clarity, the other side of Winthrop Street, which I just, sorry, I think it's 12 through, and then all of a sudden becomes 170.
Yeah.
Our understanding is those are all residential buildings and we would not like to include those in our proposal. So those would be white.
So everything is white from Mrs. Marley's down?
Across the street.
Other side of the street.
Other side.
The large apartment building, and then the three former funeral homes that are now residential.
That's all residential. So from Cajeon was up on the other side is not business.
It's not a center business. To Mrs. Marley's.
Stops at Mrs. Marley's.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
I just have a suggestion as to how to proceed. I think it would be helpful for the Rules and Ordinances Committee and for the council later to identify in the minutes those parcels that are being excluded from the map right now, that are on this map, but are not going to be considered. We have the addresses, we have them all there. I think if we went through them and said, refer this map, following exceptions, to the committee, they would be able to move forward with their things instead of trying to deal with it at the committee level, which they'd be dealt with tonight. I think it's all there. The Planning Board's done a great job of identifying all the parcels, knowing where they are, they've explained them all. I think if you just had a note in the minutes that said, these are the ones that we're not including in there, or some words in that effect, we'd clarify it, make it easier to proceed further. Thank you.
Anyone else who should be here?
Jack Dowd, Precinct 3. I want to talk about Eagle Side Park. I've talked about it in many, many meetings.
Jack, it's not part of the hearing.
From the back?
It's not part of the hearing.
Priority parcels recommended for inclusion in the modified Center Business District.
It's not in the Center Business District.
Will it be?
It's not as part of their draft.
The Planning Board did not...
So the next time council meeting, you will not be voting on parcels 141 and 151 Pauline Street.
No.
Thank you.
Anyone else who should be here? Yes.
Good evening, Jim Soper, Precinct 2, 7 Reed Street. I want to thank the Planning Board for their hard work at this. This, having worked as a building commissioner in a couple of communities, this is really valuable stuff to have versus that 2006 map that was just colors. And, you know, we were going to wing it, and that's how it was. Now, developers know, homeowners know what's in, what's out. I think the administration had a lot to do with this. I'm thankful that they put their time into it as well, and I hope the council gives this great consideration. And this consideration, I don't feel should be rushed. And so, maybe I get into this a little late, but this is not the map that I see posted on the website that I went to. This is not part of the public notice. This is not what you noticed here tonight. It's a different map. It's changed. And so, I don't want to delay things, but I think there's a process that we need to go through. So if I'm here and this map's going to change again at another time, because I think I heard the chairwoman talk about things that were in and things that were out, and they weren't really clear to me tonight, and I'm frankly kind of surprised it's not right up on the wall somewhere, so we can all look at this and be really objective with it. So I hate these moving targets and zoning, so that it leaves the public hearing realm, it goes into another area where it's not public, not that meeting, and it gets changed, and it comes out there's something else. So we rushed, or maybe there was some things going on back in 2014 that we skipped, you know, when we did in 2014, we should have, this is probably what we should have done back then, would have helped out everybody going along. So I really don't want to see it rushed. And there's other reasons why. I think we should consider some things. So we've expanded this Center Business District tonight with this map. That means more parking, because we've increased the density in these areas. So we're going to have more people, more density, more parking. We can all listen about how everyone's going to take an Uber, or maybe drive a bike, or all that kind of stuff, and take a bus. A lot of that does happen if these are the right size units, if micro units, smaller units, you know, have the two bedrooms or three bedrooms. Three bedrooms, you're going to have a car. So in this ordinance, which we'll talk about a little bit, because there's a change in the ordinance I noticed as well, I'm not quite sure what it was, Mr. Eads alluded to it, that there could be a step back. But I'm really concerned about this $2,000 per space, did a developer pays at one time? It's kind of a drop in the bucket for 10 spaces, 20 spaces for a developer who's going to develop a four, eight, $10 million project. Now, as administrators in the town, what are you going to do with that money? You're going to get $20,000 for 10 spaces? What's the plan? That's what I'd like to know. What are you going to do with the $20,000? Are you going to propose some parking someplace? Are you going to acquire some land? Is it going to go in the public domain now? So when we look at a zoning change like this, an increase in the density, we've got to have more cars, we need to plan for that, okay? People are going to take advantage of this $2,000 deal in a heartbeat, I would see that in a heartbeat. And so, I think it should be $20,000. I think it should be more. We should be able to use that money to build a structure or come up with a solution for the parking issue, because we could broke the businesses down in that area, and we don't have enough parking.
The question tonight is the map, not the zoning. We're talking just about the map. If you want to revisit the zoning, that's a whole other different issue. We're talking the map. You referred to the map. This is not exactly the map that was published, it's absolutely correct. What hasn't changed is the draft of the Planning Board. What they're doing is clarifying, when people are asking the question, is this parcel in it, is that parcel in it, they're clarifying whether it is or not. But their draft hasn't changed. Am I correct?
Isn't there a dimensional regulation change? Should we add?
Not yet.
Didn't I see that in the public notice? It's in the public notice. Did you, Mr. President, did you not see the public notice?
I just read it.
Mr. Eads spoke about it, but I don't know if you're looking for approach, but there's a change proposed to a dimensional regulation, which I'm not sure, because I didn't look into this, see if this was... And how it was changed, I don't know. We should discuss that, we should maybe talk about what was there before and what they are proposing. This is what they voted on. You know, the Planning Board voted, took a vote, I'm just looking for the name. July 15, 2019, that was their vote. So I understand that perhaps you might want to bifurcate these things, but they're not bifurcated. You have to look at this in whole. The words you put in the zoning ordinance affect the whole, all these properties. And, you know, typically in zoning, what we try to do is put the larger buildings in the middle of a project. Put the larger, taller buildings in the middle of the area and drop heights as you go out of that area. So from outside that area, from an area like coming down Walden Street, you're not going to see four-story buildings. You're going to see the two and a halves, and you're going to see it tear up until you get to the middle of the building where maybe Samuel's is. Then you've got a big high building around that area. More thought needs to be brought to this. I think we've done a great job. I don't know if we hired anybody to help us with those thoughts. There's infrastructure, we've increased the density. We're going to need crosswalks with lights. We're going to have more cars going through there. That wasn't really thought out. And I know we want to move quickly on this, I understand that, but what I've seen in the past, movement quickly often means we have problems, you know, with the interpretation of it. And that's what I do, the building commissioner, I interpret this and have it right now. And it's frustrating when, you know, you say that we should have thought this out a little bit. I'm all for this, this is a great job. I wish the whole town, like, we could go through the rest of those districts that are colored, and we could set those up too, and we could have that all done now. It's a big help for the developers who come in. We should be pro-development. I'm a pro-development guy. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Soper, President!
Anyone else, Mr. Beere? Anyone from the council, from Planning Board, like you said?
Actually, Council President, if I could?
Sure.
So it sounds like our next step is that we're going before the Rules and Ordinances Committee a week from tonight. As a member of that committee, I think it's really important to have the current zoning in front of me, as well as an accurate version of the Planning Board's proposal in order to make recommendations. Is it possible, I guess I'm asking the town manager and the town clerk, can we get that for our meeting next week? The current version and the new, and the exact, accurate proposal from the Planning Board?
The current version is included within the ordinance. That's the current map we're basing off. We'll talk to, I think that we should defer to Ron about the current process, as to what is going next. I'm not sure if the power is the next item in the road, until we have the next type of processes. Just wanted to make sure that we do a full investigation of the process correctly.
So, if the Planning Board is ready and seated to make their recommendation, I think it makes sense that we take the big map there and physically draw on the map to reflect the Planning Board's recommendations, let everyone see it, and everyone has it clearly. So I would recommend that before the Planning Board votes, I recommend the council that we do that, so that everyone can just see, this is what's in, this is what's out, this is how it differs from what was posted in the agenda, which is more than what's down there, which is an extra notice. And so I would recommend that maybe we take a few minutes and just do that now, to see if you think you're writing for the Planning Board, or if the Planning Board can have, you know, continue its deliberations, you can discuss whatever, but before the Planning Board votes, I think we should just draw on the map.
Okay.
I don't know where folks are in the process, but that would be my recommendation, then.
Do you want to say something? I think we need to cut you off. But I guess, yeah, I just want, I have one question, and it was about the properties at the top of, on the other side of Winthrop Street that we talked about. Currently in the zoning, they are zoned as, I think, Business A, and it looks like we are going across, it's still a business designation, but if we move the Center Business District designation across the street, are there any, like, are there any real changes that we're going to be adding to the zone, or is that pretty much the same thing between Business A and CBD? I just say that because there will be a change in zoning for those parcels, and I hope that this doesn't come as a surprise to them.
So our proposal, you're right, that section is currently Business A, as well as the other side of Winthrop Street is currently Business A. Our proposal is to make that side of, the northeast side of Winthrop Street, CBD instead of Business A, as we felt it blended better with the entirety of the CBD. We didn't, we just weren't looking to opine in any way on the southern part of Winthrop Street, and the fact that it's Business A, we don't believe it should be part of CBD because it's clearly all residential. Whether or not that should be changed to residential, we're not providing any opinion.
Any other questions? So you're saying that they have...
I just wanted to make notice of the boundaries of the historic district that will be on the new map, but it won't be on the map.
But the town of Winthrop does not have a sort of zoning.
Right.
So what will be on the zoning map are zoning districts. The historic district vision, the historic district, they're not zoning districts that is listed in the town.
Correct. But it will be included on the map as this is presented to me?
I believe that was put on just so folks could see the overlap, but...
Ron, can you take the microphone? Thank you.
...council. So the town of Winthrop does not have a zoning district, it's a historic district. They're not going to overlay or anything like that. So the historic district is not going to be reflected on a zoning map. I think that was put on tonight, because some folks had questions about where the historic district related to the zoning district, as an example, but that's not proposed to be created as a zoning district, as I understand it.
As part of, I think I can answer the question, Council President. We want the public to know if they're going to be inside the historic district. As part of the e-permitting rollout, we're also taking a look at our geographic information systems and how that intersects with that. And we're building an overlays map that will include things like the conservation areas, flood and paths, the historic, so that when someone goes for a building permit down at ISD, it will flag, it will notify them that they are in that district. They will have to, if there are particular review requirements that are required, they'll know that ahead of time, so they're not going to catch up. There's a separate system that we're putting in place to refine, to build in layers, and we can build in whatever layers we'd like, but we're starting with the conservation flood and historic. So there's not really a true intersection between the historic district and zoning as it relates to this issue. We do want the public to be aware that if they have a property in there...
Right. But there is an issue with development within the historic district, with funding and tax credits and...
Yeah, that's exactly why we want the public to be on notice that they have it, but from a land use perspective, from under local control, it's independent of the zone. We do want everybody to be well-aware, if they have a property within that district, that they have certain responsibilities as well, independent of the zone.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
It looks like right now it's going to go to the board on the 8th, you said, and then be made public, hopefully as soon as possible for us to vote on on the 15th, just in the interest of transparency and being as open as possible. Wanted to make more sense to have that map at the next town council meeting on a projection, so everybody can see, everybody can take a look at it, and then two weeks later, we vote on it then. So that way, there's a long period, so everybody can see exactly what we're voting on.
You can do that. Any other questions by the council? All right, we're going to take a few minute recess, so the Planning Board can make some changes on the map before they vote.
I think that needs to be happening larger in public hearings.
Okay.
Well, I suggest Michael Wang from former place of here, he created a map based upon recommendations, so...
You're going to...
As it is, okay. So if the Planning Board wants to make motions in direct, Michael is what to do, I think that would be most...
Well, I think you made a motion based off of averting the map was included, and in the post, they just would say, this is what we want to include, this is what we want to include, so that you don't find a recommendation, and based on that, you go vote a recommendation, go to the map.
While we stop, I should say. So I think, while I'm just... Of what? Based on the...
Where it may end. There are... 50/50.
Sure. Okay, my understanding is that the Planning Board would like to have the parcels on the west side of Fremont Street, from number 19 down to number 45, included in the priority area, that will be in blue. And in addition, they would like to have... I'll draw it on, I'll draw it on while it's up. So the new, the new priority area will be between 15 and 19. It will include this that's already in, it will go down all the way to Jefferson Street here, and come across like that. So this will all be the blue priority area. So there's one here, and there's one up here.
So it's still being considered to be in the CBD?
It's not in the CBD. It's something that was like... Okay, and then second component of this is, of the area, one of the areas that's currently a Business A, which is south of Jefferson and west of Winthrop, that quadrant there is not going to be included in the CBD, it's just going to be remaining as it is. So that area I'll put in red, and just for, put an X through it, so that is not considered to be parked over there. Okay, just so you guys can see. There we go. Yep.
Oh, yeah, that's clear.
That'll be white. The area here will be white, because it will remain as part of CBD.
Are you including my priority also?
No.
So that wasn't, so that wasn't, we, so we appreciate you coming up and providing your opinion, that wasn't part of our proposal. I think it's great feedback for the council to hear when they're making their decision, but it, we aren't changing our proposal that we're...
You're saying the Planning Board rejected it?
No.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
This is, this is their recommendation.
Yes.
Their recommendation, they're clearly outlining it on this map. They're going to vote on it tonight. They allow it goes to our committee on rules and ordinances. That's our opportunity to come down and state your case, okay? Because we will make the final...
That be, that one next week?
The 8th, yes.
The 8th, yes.
So all we're doing is outlining on this map their draft recommendation. One second. Are we through? Have we made all the changes? So that reflects...
So do I just make a motion that that accurately...
Yeah, I mean, if we're ready to vote in the council...
Is there any further discussion on the map?
So you can each take a vote?
Are you able to, the Planning Board?
So I would like to make a, to make a motion that the Planning Board agree?
I think you should recommend...
That our recommendation is reflected accurately. The map I can't see, but I saw it earlier, and it'd be helpful, I think, if the whole board could see it. Thank you.
Well, I think the motion should be that you're recommending that the council adopt this map as in...
Consider it. So I make the motion that the town council adopt our recommendation of this amended map for the CBD, not including the blue areas, which on that map are gray, as amended.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Can you repeat that?
Want a roll call?
Denise does roll call.
What are we voting on? They're voting on it, not us.
Kena Demento?
Yes.
Just boys.
Yes.
David Proctor?
You have to vote. She just asked you what you vote, yes or no.
Honor Horseret? Vincent Tapola?
Yes.
Steve Kulakis? David Stacey here, are we recusing him?
Now that we have a recommendation from the Planning Board, I thank them for their work, and I would like to make a motion to refer this to Rules and Ordinances for a meeting to be held as soon as possible.
Motion has been made, and we have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have. I think our business is concluded at this point.
Council President, may I have one more procedural question?
Sure.
So ultimately, when this comes before the council, in order to make any zoning changes, is it that it must be the majority of the non-recused present members, or must there be five members voting to make a change in order to make a change from the current boundaries?
I don't know if there's going to be any recusal at this point. There shouldn't be any recusal, it's a two-thirds vote.
So it must be a two-thirds vote?
The full council.
A full council.
So you need six years' vote.
Okay. And the recusals from Center Business District aren't applicable to this?
I don't think... This whole discussion, man, is over. Okay, we're going to recuse ourselves, we're going to die tonight. Correct?
Correct.
Any further discussion? Here we go. Now, I'll call this hearing closed.